To start with a moment of silence. Thank you.
David, would you lead our Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Tester will present our proposed budget for the year 2025-2026.
Okay, this is the Buchanan County Public Schools Superintendent's Budget for the years 25 and 26. Air Board of Supervisors. Air School Board. This is our leadership team here at the Buchanan County School Board Office. The budget direction is present a budget with an emphasis on the school board priority due to support the whole child. Present a balanced budget as in the county transfer will be equal to the amount required to meet the critical needs of the division. Consider the state revenue streams as provided in Governor Youngkin's proposed budget and the General Assembly Conference budget for 25-26. Consider the federal revenue streams as provided in the Omega system. Ensure that physical human and physical resources are used effectively, efficiently, and responsibly. This is our definition of our majors of our streams. Your state revenue, your federal money. The federal funds are directed through categorical programs such as education for the economically disadvantaged Title I, education for the individuals with disabilities, which is Title 6B. Your local revenue, and then you have other local revenue, which is our includes monies from the interest of funds of sales of properties, tuition rebates, and refunds that we get. This is the definition of our major optics of revenue, which is our personal bridge cost, our purchase services, utilities, communication, insurance, materials, and supplies. Travel, training, and continuing education, our lease and rentals, capital outlay, our VPS technology grant that we get. This is the Code of Virginia, the saying that we have to hold one public hearing on the budget, and that has to give a 10 days notice to the public. And that we have to give this to our governing body. This is just the Code of Virginia, that states that we have to have our budget to the Board of Supervisors of the county by April. This is our message from our superintendent.
As your superintendent, it is my privilege to present our financial plan, which reflects our unwavering commitment to providing the highest quality education for all of our 2,206 students enrolled in Buchanan County schools. The 2025-26 academic year budget includes 27,327,464 in state funds, 8.1 million in local funds, 7,686,274 in federal and state grants, 3,246,807 in food service, and 982, 354,000 in textbook funds. Buchanan County Public Schools is very appreciative for the continued support of our Board of Supervisors with local funding. In working together to ensure the success of our students, it is essential that we remain focused, being responsible financial stewards of our educational system. It is our collective responsibility to ensure that every dollar allocated supports student achievement, staff excellence, and overall district success. Our proposed budget reflects a roadmap for our district's future. It outlines our priorities, our goals, our dedication to fostering our environment where every student can thrive. We have carefully examined our priorities to ensure that our financial resources are directed toward enhancing student learning, investing in our dedicated educators, and maintaining a safe and effective school facilities. The budget for 2025-26 school year outlines allocations for essential resources, innovative programs, and support services that will enhance the learning experience for our students. We have also prioritized investments in our facilities and technology to create a safe and engaging environment conducive to learning. Our key priorities of them budget include investments in academic programs by maintaining a high-quality, well-rounded instruction program. Our support for teachers and staff by providing competitive salary and benefit packages and recognizing the hard work and dedication of our employees. And providing professional development. Addressing the mental health and wellness by maintaining support services. And operational efficiency. Making sure that our strategic financial decisions to maximize resources. And that we follow all policies of the quality, the standards of quality, standards of accreditation, and all the guidelines that drive our instructional programs. We recognize that the physical challenges remain. We're committed to the transparency and accountability in managing our district funds. As we move forward, we encourage community engagement and feedback to ensure this budget reflects the values and needs of those we serve. So together, we can shape a budget that not only meets their current needs, but also sets the stage for future success. I also want to emphasize the importance of open communication and collaboration. Our schools thrive when we work together, and that's as a team. The student, parents, teachers, and administrators. And parents, I encourage you to actively engage in your child's education, attend your parent-teacher conferences, and stay connected throughout our various communication channels. So I want to thank the board, our staff, parents, community members, for all your ongoing support of our students and schools. Together, we can continue to provide an outstanding education while maintaining financial stability. So I look forward to a successful and rewarding school year. Thank you.
The Budget Executive Summary. Virginia's public schools are financed through a combination of state, local, and federal funds. The private sector also contributes through partnerships with schools and school divisions. This distribution of the state funds for public education is a responsibility of the General Assembly through the Appropriations Act. General fund appropriations serve as the mainstay of state support for the Commonwealth's public schools, augmented by retail sales and use tax revenues, state lottery proceeds, and other sources. County, cities, and towns comprising school divisions also support public education by providing locality share to maintain an educational program, meaning the Commonwealth standards of quality. While public education is primarily a state and local responsibility, the federal government provides assistance to state and local education agencies in support of specific federal initiatives and mandates. Governor Youngkin's presented his amended 24-26 biannual budget on Wednesday, December the 18th, 2024. It is important to remember that the information provided in the governor's proposed budget for the fiscal year 26 can change, and it probably will. The introduced budget was considered at the 25th General Assembly Session, which convened in January the 8th of 2025. The amended biannual budget covers fiscal years 25 and 26. The introduced budget bill contained the governor's budget recommendations as House Bill 1600 and Senate Bill 800. The 24-26 budget was adopted by the 25th General Assembly in March of 25 and is now under consideration by Governor Youngkin. The governor has 30 days to act on the budget. Any actions that require action by the General Assembly will be reviewed at the convened session scheduled for April the 2nd, 2025. The budget is based on the funding from the adopted budget passed by the General Assembly. This budget is funded, is presented on that, on the General Assembly's funding. The following are some changes made to the budget. The introduced budget updates the projections of unadjusted and adjusted average daily membership for fiscal years 25 and 26, based on the latest actual ADM and fall membership data available for March the 31st of 2024, ADM, and September the 30th, 2024. The introduced budget reflects the most recent estimates of sales tax revenue dedicated to public education for 25 and 26. The revised sales tax estimates include both the 1% portion and the 1/8% portion that are appropriated for school divisions based on school age population. The General Assembly Conference budget increases the projected lottery proceeds but reduces the general funds required for the direct aid. There is no impact to school divisions. The governor's amendment reflects the updated Weldon Cooper Center school age population estimates used to distribute the state sales tax revenue. This action results in a decrease in the general fund appropriations for basic aid in fiscal year 2026. Various technical adjustments have been made to SOQ incentive categorical lottery funded and supplemental education accounts to reflect the latest data elements and actual and updated projections, projected participation in programs. Funding for the remedial summer school program decreases, decreases based on actual participation in the remedial summer school program in summer of 2024. Funding for the at-risk aid add-on also decreases based on actual participation. In addition, state funding for the English learner teachers increases based on the actual fall 2024 enrollment proficiency levels. Funding for the governor's school programs is reduced based on actual enrollment of 2025. Compensation supplement decreases based on actual participation, and VPSA educational technology grants decrease based on updates for the schools reporting fall membership for 25. And 24 and 25 accreditation status for use in calculating grants under the e-learning backpack initiative. The governor's amended budget recognizes cost to categorical accounts based on actual program participation. Nearly all the decrease is attributable to the special education homebound program. The governor's amended budget includes technical updates based on actual participation and revised estimates to lottery funded accounts. Early reading initiative decreases due to updated PALS and VALS data. Funding for the special education regional tuition program increases. Funding for the K3 primary class size reduction decreases. And funding for school breakfast decreases based on actual meals served in 23-24. Funding for the Virginia preschool initiative and early childhood programs decreased based on actual participation reported by the school divisions to date. The governor's amended budget includes updated supplemental education assistance program estimates with an increase to vision screening grants for students in kindergarten, grades two or three, and grade seven and 10. The General Assembly Conference budget proposes a bonus payment to school divisions. Bonuses will be paid to SOQ-funded instructional and support positions no later than June 1 of 2025. The state payment is based on $1,000 bonus. School divisions have the discretion to determine the amount of the bonus to be paid per employee. Remember, these are preliminary numbers that can and probably will change. State projections of an average daily membership for fiscal year 26 are lower than last year. The state is projecting an ADM of 2,132.40 students, and we have based our budget on the revised projections of 2,132.40 students. Impact of the budget. The budget for 25-26 is based on a local composite index of 0.2557 and a projected average daily membership of 2,132.40 students. The local composite index is the same for 25-26 as it was for 24-25. That means that the state will contribute the same to Buchanan County schools as it did last year if our average daily membership and composite index remain the same. We are seeing an increase to state funding because of the changes in legislation. The state allocation totals for fiscal year 26 equals $27,327,464, which is an increase, and I have, I'm sorry, a misprint there. It should be $639,435 from the previous year. The increase is due to the changes in the governor's budget and the General Assembly's conference budget. As you see, we have the county at the same. There was no change. We're still asking for $8.1 million. Our federal grants, we are getting a little bit more for Title I, so they have increased to 1.2 million.
What's the county's level funding? What's level funding for the county for us?
I did not look that up, but I think it's around 0.8.
Just give back.
0.8 to 6 million.
No reason to guess. You don't have to guess. Just get back with me and send me an email.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Food service was decreased because of the rate of meal reduction, I mean, the meals that we get reimbursed for, so we have a decrease there. Other funds are just some local funds that we get. We have increased that by 39,000. Air Fund 5, which we zeroed out today, but I'd already completed the budget. Fund 6 is 10,000, and then Fund 8 is 5,000. As you see, this is just a graph showing us, the state gives us 59%, federal's 14%, county's 17%. This is our expenditures. Air Instruction is 29 million. Administration's 1.1. Attendance and Health is 1.3. Transportation's 3. Operations Maintenance is 6. Technology is 1.9. Air Debt Service, which is decreasing, thank goodness, 439,000. Our Textbooks has increased with our carryover for 982,000. Food Service is 3.2. Other Funds is 15,532. Our total budget for school operating is 47,959,739. Here's just a graph to show you. The biggest thing is our Instruction. Maintenance is 11%. Transportation is 6, so is Food Service. This is information about our schools. This is your ADM as of February, the end of February. So, you know, Council has 185 students at 2.5 that we're spending per school. Re-Review is 649 at 7 million. Hurley Middle's 313 at 3.8. Twin Valley's 223 students at 3.1. Council's 114 students at 1.3. Twin Valley High is 172 with 2 million. Grundy High's 346 students with 3.4. Hurley High School's 192 students at 2.2, and the Career and Technology is 2 million. On a statewide basis, the revised ADM projections in the governor's budget are lower in fiscal year 26 than in 25. There is no change in the composite index in 26. Basic aid payments have been adjusted to reflect the increased share of costs. The rates for the Virginia retirement system remain the same at 15.23% for professional employees for the retirement. The retiree health credit also remained at 1.21%. The local disability rate is 0.47%. The classified employee rate remained the same at 39.67%. The local disability rate is at 0.74%, and the retiree health credit is at 2.35%. The group life insurance rate is 1.3% for professional and classified. Governor Youngkin's revised proposed budget and General Assembly Conference budget did include an average salary increase for the fiscal year 26 of 3%. This year's budget was based primarily on the General Assembly's conference budget. As we have learned in the past, this budget may and probably will change when the final budget is signed by the governor. Your VRS rates usually stay the same for two years, and then they will change next This is just an expenditure graph to show you that our salaries are 67%. Health insurance is 16%. VRS disabilities are 11%. Your FICA is 5%, and then your workers' compensation is like 1%. The salary increase changes. We've got 2% plus 1 step, which equals an average of 3%. We kept the insurance at 5%. We do not have the information to know that if they're going to change or not. The school construction grant that we have in this budget is 102,127,202. And then the budget and revenue for the school operating fund is 47,559,739 for revenue and expenses, which gives us a total budget with our school construction of 150,86,212.
So with the salary, what's, what are you, you're giving the employees 1 step plus 2%?
Yes.
Were there any other changes to the salary scales?
No.
Would that be more, the 3%?
Okay, so like, and I say an average of 3% because you'll have some people, because of the way our salary scales are structured, where we have a set amount between the steps of like 0 to 1, 2, and so forth, are more on some, well, it's the same amount. So the top amount and the bottom amount has an equal amount of in many step. So some people will get more than 3%. Some people will get like 2.7, 2.8%. But the average is out overall to above 3%.
Yeah.
Yes, average.
So with classified personnel?
Most classified personnel are, they're getting over 3%.
Okay.
Yeah, it's weighted to help the classified.
Yes. Mostly, some of your supervisors and your principals are the ones that are not getting the 3%.
But they're making substantial, they're making double the money.
Any other questions?
We did the budget on 2,168.5.
Okay, and you said that this is based on the budget for last year, or the ADM for last year?
It's the March 31st ADM, which is what the, each year when they, they put out like the budget, like the governor puts out his budget, and they kind of look at our ADM, what we have, and what they think that we're going to lose in students, and that's what they put it out. Like, right now, we are a little bit, like, maybe five or something students above what we did our budget on last year, which is good, because then they will adjust it after the 30, March the 31st, when they get their final ADM.
So the enrollment figure she did her ADM was 2,168?
2,168 last year, yes.
And her current enrollment is for like this month, last month, was 2,197. So what she's done is she's presented a conservative budget in case she, things decline, and then if it winds up being 2,197, then she'll have a surplus. And we'll have surplus.
So, you know, in my opinion, it's better to be more conservative with it, and you get more money as, instead of like when it comes up May, they have shortage of money than what you had your budget based on. So I usually, we just go by what the state projects, and then if we go above it, then we're better off.
How often do they project, I mean, are they pretty well on it, what we, we give them?
Last year, though, we got a little bit more, and this year it looks like we may get a little bit more. But in previous years, it's been pretty much right on.
We're about 30 ahead of what they budgeted last year. 2,168 to 2,197.
Were there any off-the-scale raises for any personnel?
No, the only thing that, you know, changed was when we did the salary skills was, you know, like the amount that we gave for the nurses last year that you all voted on. So I didn't feel that that was a change.
Right, yeah, no, it's not. A few years back, maybe it's six years ago, we had some that, so I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
So we're not surprised.
No, no, you're not, no, there's no.
Off-the-scale.
Yes, no, anything that makes major changes, I try to always record it on that last page. You know, any changes, like if the health insurance had increased, I would have put that in there. But there was, you know, no changes this year.
So the 5%, where did that come from?
That's the 5% that the employees pay. And we have not changed that. It's been the same for several years, but I just wanted to state that we have not raised that.
Okay, so we're not projecting, the supervisor, we don't know if there's any increase in the health insurance.
No, they're having an insurance meeting right now, so.
Okay, okay. Who's on that committee? Somebody is.
Tommy.
There you go.
I don't know how I can beat both places.
Okay.
I would like to be in dinner.
We didn't know about it. They didn't do it till Monday evening.
Yes, and if it's all right with the board, I'm going to go.
Oh, there you go.
Any more comments, questions?
I hope it's good news.
I said, can I get a report good news?
Yeah, no, good job.
And I'll get back to you on that.
You are the board member.
I know, but I was talking about the board supervisors. Who's on the insurance committee at board supervisors? You know?
Board supervisors? Trish is on it. Craig Horn is on it. Craig Still, I think, is on it.
And then you have the DSS that comes, and you have a DSS representative.
It has to be submitted to the county by April 1st.
Is there any public comment on the budget?
Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing part of our meeting?
Make the motion close.
Coach, you first.
Yes.
Mike, David.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Tommy, yes. With that, we'll proceed with our regular scheduled monthly meeting of the school board. We've already had our moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll proceed with our recognitions.
It's not to say such a large group here to not thank you from hand. Yeah, this is our regional science fair. These are the grades 6 through 8 that went to, right, for New River. They had one in county and went to regional. We're so excited when you all go, and that's such an honor that you take them. And, and Ruth, I'm ready.
All right. Maddie Christian with Hurley Elementary Middle School, second place, and she received a special award for her project board, Lights Out. Is she here tonight? Okay. Xander Matney, Twin Valley Elementary Middle School, second place.
Did you have fun with me? Or great?
Wyatt Street and Cooper Justice from Riverview Elementary Middle School, first place. Explaining Physics Through Balloon Car Experiment in Physics and Astronomy. All right. Angela Lee, Riverview Elementary School, honorable mention. Will it sink or will it float in Physics and Astronomy? Virginia Grace Van Dyke, Riverview Elementary Middle School, second place. Fat or Fluffy 2.0, Animal Science and Biochemistry. Arabella Barton and Leah Wilson from Council Elementary Middle School, first place, Behavioral Sciences Award. Ally Compton, Council Elementary Middle School, second place, honorable mention, Public Health and Healthcare and Chemistry. I love science awards. Caitlin Owens, Council Elementary Middle School, first place in Public Health and Healthcare, and second place Behavioral and Social Sciences Award. Lindsay Owens and Zoe McLaughlin, Council Elementary Middle School, third place, Earth and Environmental Sciences and Physics and Astronomy Award. Aiden Fuller and Brayden Fuller were recognized in the Chemistry Division of the Blue Ridge Regional Science Fair. Regional Science Fair. All right, Jocelyn Peet, first place, starlight defense, the fireproof wonder. Mia Sanders, third place, nothing but power.
Do we have any coaches or teachers that went with this group that's here tonight?
I think we should have these on display next year, I'd like to see them.
You have to do that, won't you bring your...
Yeah. Like we do our art.
We can, cause they get a lot of good awards, don't you guys?
These, they're, sound great.
So we thank you for going and representing their county. Next we'll have our Riverview Legover Box, so Ms. Owens, I know you guys are the sponsors visiting, is anyone else here with you? Michelle, that's fine, so if you all want to come up.
Come on to the front, Michelle, you ain't had.
Congratulations, Phyllis.
Congratulations.
Looked like two in tackles.
No, there's several in these rooms that actually had hers.
Yeah, she gets so excited for the science, bitch.
Okay, um...
We can't, what kind of science?
You are.
You get excited too. Oh, Karen gets so excited when she sees something blow up in her eye.
Sherry just don't like when I see the spiders and the lizards and a fish.
All right, uh, here's our Riverview Rising Tide, Colton Kraus. Wilson Tannajay. Ty, okay, I apologize. Wesley. Brantley Compton. Sophia Lee. Josie McCoy. Cage Church. Nick Harris. Ava Church. Logan Belcher. Brianna Atkins. And Justin Stillman.
I looked, I thought Justin's name, okay, Nick. Ava, Logan. Brianna's not here and I bet you're just... Okay, can you tell us a little bit, I know they went state qualifiers, am I correct? So you wanna tell us a little bit about your group or what?
Well, this group's been together for several years now and they actually won at the I R S Center and added them, so they got a chance to go to state. And we kind of came back and kind of redid a lot of things, but we thought, well, we're not ready for state, so it was a shock to all of us, I think a big surprise, and so we got on board and we got it done, and they did really well and I'm real proud of them. They've learned a lot, they've already talked about this fall what they, we need to change already, but we need to go back to state.
All right.
As their, Logan talked about to go back.
And you're gonna win next year, right?
Yes.
It's a good group, thank you for representing us. Good job.
Ms. Owens, weren't you named the coach of the year for the state? Congratulations, young lady.
The team that worked and we did, we all worked, it wasn't just Maggie.
Good players make a good coach.
Miss Maggie was really on board with it all.
Well, we appreciate it, we appreciate your time, we appreciate you guys. Thank you all, good job, thank you. Okay, so now we have, it's the all that chance, right?
So following students qualified for the state F B L A competition, placing in regional from Council High School, Katie Wompler, first place in U X Design. Madison Oakland, second place in financial math. All right, Reagan Lester, third place in financial math. And then in group presentation in sports and entertainment management, Billy Zoe Brown. Evan Brown. Okay. And Mackenzie Radler. Thank you, Evan, for representing our group. Congratulations, that's a great...
Parents can come around, take photos if y'all want to. Cherry, tell them they can come around. We don't leave them working in the shadows.
It's a nice looking group, you can turn on that. Okay.
I'm trying to retire from this, but I don't have it so hard.
Looking good.
Hasn't lost the pose, has it?
Thank you for representing us, guys. This is, um, Esports and Kayla Cantrell, they've done real well and, uh, they're competing right now at Ruddy High School, she was hoping she was good. Is she here?
Wait, it was good timing.
She was messaging and saying, the last competition, this is the first, um, Esports that we've had, and they've done very well, and she wanted them recognized, and they've had done very well.
We've got some moving on in Esports too.
We have had, I don't know if she's told you guys yet or not, but we had a, um, it's a social media sports group that recognizes like all sports, but basketball, they're really big on promoting, if that off the clock, and they are wanting to do a interview with Esports, they're starting to promote, and so they've contacted to try to get ahold of Kayla and we're getting parent permission and stuff to do that now, but...
Come on, keep walking.
I'm on.
Keep walking.
Tell us about your, uh, Esports, tell them what you want to tell them and then we'll follow up here.
So sorry we're a little late, we just had a match that we were working on Super Smash Brothers, but the Hurley guys won, so good luck to them. Esports is a new program that we started this fall thanks to the help of the Career Center and the Boys and Girls Club Program, and we were able to start this program that students are actually able to play sports in the electronic form with the video games. And we've actually had a student that's got a college scholarship to go play at Alice Lloyd after he finished his high school this year. We've had other colleges that have reached out to us for our seniors to see if there's others that they could give scholarship money to for, um, so it's a really great program. If you check into Esports, it's growing crazy across the nation. Uh, Ms. Angie sent us some information, there's a guy that wants to do a podcast on our students for their win of, and how well they've done with the Esports season. I wish we had this when your two's kids were with me for robotics, uh, but we've done really well this fall, so which ones do you want to start with, who you got there first?
Uh, we started around here at the top with Stacy.
Okay, so, uh, we had a Fortnite team, so we had a group of Grace Roby and Matt Ratliff, so if you two will come on up. Matt actually got a college scholarship to play at Alice Lloyd. They finished the season thirty-two, and in the Fortnite group, there was a hundred and thirty-six teams on the east coast region bracket. So then we had Teddy Smith and Brady Markham, I don't see them, they placed, um, twenty-second, twenty-two in the season, and then Teddy was actually chosen as a player of the week, Play V S every week based on how students play with their skills and things. He actually won a player of the week for the whole group out of the hundred and thirty-six teams, which was pretty awesome. Um, and then we had from Hurley, Dayton E Step and Brayden Blankenship, they were the top performers, they finished ninth in the season out of the hundred and thirty-six teams in that group. Nope, I don't see them. We had Madden teams, we had two teams in Madden with Sean Blake Payne and Tyler McNeely, so Tyler, you can come up. No, Blake's not here. And then we also had a Mario Kart team that we played, uh, we did really well in the Mario Kart division too, but I don't see any of those students here. And then we had Super Smash Brothers, which is what we played this afternoon. It's a Virginia high school sanctioned through the Virginia High School League, and we had a hundred and teams, a hundred and seventy teams total in that one, but we had a great showing of sixty-four with Dylan Justice, Charles Blankenship, and Cameron Stacy. So, and Cameron was actually chosen the week of February, I gotta check it down here and see where it was, um, cause I get all this mixed up, there's so many different sports we're playing, but Cameron was actually chosen as a player of the week for the last week of February through Play V S out of the teams for the spring semester, which is a pretty great honor. And then we had from the Grundy High School team, we had Eric Powers, uh, Toby Lane, and Eric, come on up. Eric Powers, Toby Lane, and Tyler played the, um, Super Smash Brothers also. So that's all the ones that are present this afternoon, but we also played Valorant in the fall, and those guys finished sixty-seven out of a hundred and nine teams. So, but we really wanted to recognize the first year doing the Esports program and their progress of how well they've done from the fall semester to growing the program for the spring semester.
Thank you all. And good luck at colleges, Bob, young man. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Uh, before we move on with our delegations, uh, could we get a motion to approve the presented budget for twenty-five, twenty-six by Ms. Tester in our public hearing?
Motion.
Coach Compton, some, motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Raise a second, any discussion? Coach Compton?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes, Nama, yes. Uh, then we have, Tim, you up?
So this month has been really good. The weather has cooperated and, uh, let's see, what do I gotta do, back up one slide? There you go. So the C T program, they came out, did a drone flyover, and this is a photo that they took of the site itself. They had one of the whole site and I decided to put this one in there that actually just shows the actual building itself. But this month's been a great month and we're looking forward to some good weather to continue on. During this month, um, the site grading continued, uh, on the soccer fields, uh, grading is near completion, um, the cut and fill operations, front parking lot has started and it's almost done. Baseball and softball field grading is in, uh, continues. The concrete foundation work in area C and D is almost complete, which will complete all of the footers, uh, for the building. The low block is complete except for a small section in area D. Um, the mechanical, electric, and plumbing, under slab roughing, uh, in the gym area is, was completed, uh, the under slab roughing in areas B, C, and D are in progress. Slab on grade in area A, uh, is complete and has started in area B, that's the concrete pour, uh, it's all, area A is all poured out and we poured a little bit into area B. Foundation walls, uh, underground have been waterproofed and are complete, and the C M U walls at the gym are going up, at the, going up now. Uh, in the next coming month, uh, we plan to complete the underground, uh, M E P roughings in areas B, C, and D, uh, the slab on grade prep and pour areas B, C, and D, so hopefully by the twenty-ninth of, uh, April, all of the concrete slabs for the building will be poured. Um, the steel, uh, is to be set in area A this week, the remaining steel will be coming sometime in April, and they will start setting steel on the building around, uh, the twenty-first of April. The, uh, grading for the baseball and softball fields will, uh, continue, uh, to finalize the football field grading, uh, just to kind of touch enough things, uh, that will be completed. Uh, the cut and fill, the front parking, whatever's left will be done, uh, and then we're continuing work on the north roundabout, uh, where we've got to relocate a bunch of utilities. And they've already undercut for the ticket booth for the foundations, and they started on the fieldhouse yesterday undercut for the foundations. So work has progressed greatly this month and looking forward to see what's gonna happen in the next month. Here's a couple pics, a few pictures we took, uh, this was our first concrete pour, uh, this was about eh, four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, uh, they had just started pouring the gym on the far end there. This was the next day after the gym floor had been poured and they were cutting the control joints in. Um, this is where they were demoing where the new antidote goes on the north end of the building, getting the pavement out of the road, uh, so we can start those utilities and, uh, get a transformer relocated and get power on our office trailer, permanent power instead of a generator that runs all day right beside my window. Uh, this is, uh, another pour we did, uh, this is, uh, looking south down by the locker rooms, the team rooms, um, this was poured on the twenty-first. This is, uh, where they've been laying block in the gym, uh, area bathrooms, the ones that will be used for basketball. be used for basketball and football. Here's a picture of the gym looking southwest, looking, you can kind of see the walls are going up. I think the one on the far end's about somewhere around twenty feet high now, and the ones on the side are probably around sixteen. Here's another picture looking the opposite way from the gym, and you can see that the walls on the side there as well. This is the auditorium subgrade, we finally got it cut where, so you can actually see the slope of it and all that, so that's, that looks, area looks really good now. Getting ready for the stone and the concrete to be poured there. So now we have an interactive drone image that Anthony's gonna walk us through, or he's gonna run the machine, the little mouse, and I'm gonna talk about it. This is a pretty good thing that we did, that they've done, that I think was pretty cool, so I wanted to share that with the group tonight. Coming in, entrance on the lobby, where everybody would come in to the left there. There you go. Roll it around so everybody can see kind of how it sets. Whoa. So this is where the school, all the traffic should come into the school. This is down the road from the call center. As you can see, go up to the right, let's go left first. That's right.
They ain't catching around on this, boy.
So this road right here, which he'll blow up here in a second. This is the road that'll be going up by the football field, up to the athletic park and going up further there. As you can see, there's a retention pile on the left, football field will be on the right, just a little bit further up. Going up.
Program's running slow. Yeah. Might be something with connection.
With the mouse. What is your mouse from back there, guys?
You got something that's not white.
Oh, you got something there. Oh, there you go. Now you gotta find your place again. It will mess with you, that's for sure.
Mouse might be running dead.
You're not far, just go forward.
Good job.
I'm not sure if it's the program or the mouse.
There we go. All right, so go on up to the parking lot there on the left there. This is where the parking lot will be for the baseball softball field, and over to the left there is where they've been cutting out. You can kind of see, roll it so they can see the cut of the baseball field. The baseball field does have a little slope down into it. Softball field will also... What's wrong with this thing?
It's not gonna cooperate.
Too far away with the mouse gun?
See if it wanna come back here.
Go back here. It might be easier.
Are there two entrances and exits to the, to the facility, or just a single?
There's one entrance down from, by, where you come out by the...
Kildare.
Carlson, that room? Where you come in from the neighborhood.
Okay.
Is that better? Okay, so roll, so you can see where his mouse is there, that's where the softball field is, I mean baseball, softball will be off to the left. They've not finished cutting that out yet, so that'll be cut out some more. I think the softball field's a little bit higher than the baseball field. All right, let's go back to the entrance and go up the road. Yeah, it's working a lot better. So as you come in, up from the, the Rough Grouse Lane there, the entrance to the parking lot is about there where his mouse is, back this way a little further, come on back a little more, a little more towards, right in that, just before you hit that curve, that's where the entrance to the main parking lot will be, is there. Going up. And there's another pond up there, as you can see, all those rocks there are for landscaping that will be spread out throughout the site. All right, let's go take a look at the school, buddy. So you can kind of get a perspective of the walls and stuff going in. This is inside the gym, he's rolling around now, but these walls are much taller now already since they ran the drone. All right, come back out. As you can see, the gym was poured, that was on the eighteenth. The next day, they poured that area that has the yellow air barrier or moisture barrier down, and then they poured the other area on the twenty-first. So go over to the right, so there's the auditorium, the band room to the left of the auditorium, band storage is all there in that little section there. To the right of the auditorium, we are putting underground plumbing in that area right now, that is the kitchen and dining area. That's where the kitchen and dining will be. And go on over to the right, near the front, come to the front of the school, that's where your admin offices are along there. Your first CTE wing is in the back there, and then the other one there to the right. So anyway, that's just kind of an idea, we thought it was pretty cool where we could roll it around and you could see the different elevations. Let's go to the football field, we forgot the football field. So as you can see, you're down in the football field, and the size, how it's cut up on the three sides, the banking, they still gotta do the final grading. The fieldhouse would be down there, straight down on the end, the open end down there. So anyway, that's kind of what I wanted to show, I thought it was pretty neat how that they've done this and made it available where we could use it for the meeting. Any questions or comments tonight? Just keep giving us good weather, and we will keep on keeping on.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other delegations that would like to address the board?
The three point oh four is at track and supposed to be Kevin, at Grundy. She's at Grundy Track and supposed to be Kevin, but that will be closed.
All right, do we...
No, she is. You're busy with the station, so.
Do we have any need for closed session?
Yes, personnel.
Personnel and legal advice, could I have a motion to go into closed session for personnel and legal advice? Motion. Tommy, is a motion, have a second?
Second.
Ray? Coach Compton?
Yes, sir.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Welcome to the Southern Gap High School groundbreaking ceremony. As most of you know, my name is Sherry Fletcher, and today I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your emcee. I would like to thank all of you for attending today, and the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April nineteen seventy-seven flood in the Levasse Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of nineteen eighty-one and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the Levasse and Tug Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section two oh two of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by nineteen seventy-seven flood. Non-structural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April nineteen seventy-seven flood, or the one percent annual flood, also known as the one hundred year flood, whichever is greater. In two thousand nineteen, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of two thousand and nineteen. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of nineteen eighty-one. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the tech center but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January two thousand twenty-one, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the tech center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the two thousand, the two oh two program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the tech center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of tech center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets two oh two program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Catherine Carver, Chief Real Estate Division of Great Lakes and Ohio River Division, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Shane Quinn, Representative from Senior Mark Warner's Office. Laura Beavins, Representative from Senior Kane's Office. Cody Mumpiler, Deputy District Director from Congressman Morgan Griffin. Tyler Lester, Representative from State Senator Todd Peeler's Office. And Tom Lester, Representative from the Virginia House of Delegates, Will Morfield. Our speakers for today will be Colonel Jason Putman, Shane Quinn, Tyler Lester, Curtis Ellsworth, Craig Stiltner, and Angie McClanahan. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize members of Buchanan County Constitutional Offices, and we have Alan Boyd here for Sheriff, Nikki Stiltner, Matt Peeler. Members of our Buchanan County Board of Supervisors. Craig Stiltner, Roger By. Members of the County IDA Board, Alicia Oakwin, Matt Peeler, I'm not even sure if the volunteer, Tim Oakwin. And members of the Buchanan County School Board. I also want to thank some special people today, our coaches and teachers from each high school for bringing the vans and helping with the parking. We have, we have students from each high school, that was ushers today, thank you. And our Buchanan County Band. Our principals and central office staff, which has helped so diligently, and I couldn't have made it these past two days without my staff. As well as all of the parents, students and community members that are here today. So at this time, I would like for you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the National Anthem and the invocation. We will now be led in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance by our Eagle Scouts, Blake Brawls and Brody Compton.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We will now be led in the singing of the National Anthem by the Buchanan County Band.
Now we have Hasbro Lightry from Band Set Church of Christ, a lot of the angels.
Dear God, we are glad that you are here. We are glad that you were present at each and every meeting in the past, and we pray and we are grateful that you, we know that you will be with us in the future. You're God, and you know the past, you're here now, and you're gonna lead us into the future. We pray a special blessing upon this school, faculty... We pray a special blessing upon this school, faculty, the staff, the leaders in our community. But most of all, we pray that out of this school will come students who will be great leaders in wherever you plant them. It's our prayer that every student that graduates from this school and all schools, that they will bloom wherever you plant them. But we pray, God, that you will continue to lead, guide, and direct, and we pray this prayer in the name of your son, who is the same yesterday, today, and forever, Jesus. Amen.
Our first speaker today is Angie McLennan, Buchanan County Public Schools School Board
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to stand here today on behalf of my fellow board members in the Buchanan County Public Schools. This has been a long journey, and while I recognize that we still have a journey ahead of us, today's milestone groundbreaking for construction of the Southern Gap High School is exciting, and it puts us one step closer to the opening the doors of the vast and invaluable opportunities that we can offer to our youth. We are only here due to the hard work and long hours that consisted of many meetings, collaboration, and negotiations between many. It is that work that often goes unrecognized, but today, with many of those individuals here, agencies and departments being present and represented, I want to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for making this school a reality with your diligence and your perseverance. As we all know, this beautiful new facility will open so many doors for academics, sports, vocational trades, arts, and musical opportunities for our children. The ability to host events beyond our district will be an asset to our community as a whole. How proud we will be to be able to hold these events here and show off our beautiful mountains and the southern hospitality of our Buchanan County folks. The Buchanan County Schools' mission statement is "Our Children, Our Future, Our Responsibility." I truly cannot think of a better representation of that statement than the collaborative efforts for Southern Gap High School. May we never take for granted this blessed opportunity that we have been given that's going to outlive us all for generations to come.
Our second speaker for today will be Shane Clemm from Senator Mark Warner's Office.
Thank you, Sherri, and I'll second that. Go Eagles! I look forward to pulling for Southern Gap, except as my friend Tommy Krieger would say, when they play the big O. That's all I have. I'm actually here, Senator Warner asked me to recognize one particular person. Took many people to get to this day. This individual is so responsive to our office, our multiple inquiries, always got back to us in a timely manner, and that individual is retired Colonel Robert Peterson. So I want to read this letter from Senator Warner on your behalf. As committee gathers today for Buchanan County Public Schools groundbreaking for the consolidated high school, I'm pleased extending my appreciation for your diligent work to bring this project to fruition. Civil servants like you are the backbone of our nation, dedicate themselves daily to ensure the American people can rely on their federal government. We are all indebted to you for your efforts as the project manager for the United States Army Corps of Engineers on the consolidated high school project. If you come up, I want to present something to you. I'm pleased to present you with an American flag that was flown over the United States Capitol. I hope it will display this flag in its official capacity as a reminder of its values, that represents and recognition of your commitment to serving our nation. On this important occasion, I'm pleased to join with dear family, friends, and colleagues in saluting your accomplishments and wishing you success in all your future endeavors.
And I'd just like to say, I'm truly humbled and honored, and I just want to personally thank the Board of Supervisors, Craig Horn, the School Board, Melanie Hibbert, and of course Sherri and Angie for bringing it across the finish line. So yeah, this ceremony and this groundbreaking wouldn't have been possible without all of their hard work. So thank you.
Our third speaker for today will be Tyler Lester from Todd Pillin's Office.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Senator Todd Pillin. As a member of the Senate Finance and Senate Education Health Committees, one of Senator Pillin's top priorities is providing the resources and opportunities necessary that allow our region's students to thrive and succeed, and working with federal and local partners to ensure that happens across all levels. He extends his thanks to the local leadership here in Buchanan County, our federal legislative delegation, and the Army Corps of Engineers for all the hard work and tough decisions that have had to be made along the way to get to this day. Much like your neighbors across the mountain in Dickinson County when Bridgeview High School was completed, this school here at Southern Gap will be the envy of Southwest Virginia, providing a state-of-the-art facility that our students deserve to learn in, experience, and prepare for their futures. As construction moves forward, Senator Pillin stands ready to assist in any way that he can, and third time's the charm, go Eagles!
Our fourth speaker will be Colonel Jason Putman, Huntington District Office.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, friends, and family, thank you for being here and really appreciate you guys inviting us to share this with you. I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add to what was said earlier. This really is a special event. You did hear how we got here, hey, section 202 unfortunately came out of the 77 flood, maybe a sad event for a lot of the folks who either lived it, heard about it, saw it, felt it. But in some cases, good can come from that. And 202 is special, just like this part of the country. I tell my team, they're probably sick of me hearing it, I'm originally from Vermont. That's where I grew up, so this is not unlike where I grew up. Some of the challenges are the same, some of the issues are the same, so it feels a little bit like home. And one of the unique things that we get to do at the Corps sometimes, it doesn't always work out this way, and sometimes it takes us time to get to that point, but we get to do things that do make a significant impact. Everything from dealing with disasters and seeing people on their worst day ever to events like this, where the event that led us to this may not have been great, but this one is. And as we have talked about, this focus is really about education for the children, and that makes such a difference for them and our communities and our nation down the road. So I don't know that you can do much better than doing something for the education of children. So I really feel privileged to be here. I'm really happy because the colors are the same as my alma mater, West Point, so it makes it easy for me. If it had been blue and gold like Navy, why does that not have a problem? But no, congratulations on achievement, and I will say, please join me in a round of applause for your federal, state, and local elected representatives that worked extremely hard through all of this to make sure that this got done. Their teams on a daily basis. Again, I don't know that I can say go Eagles, because it's really bad. I guess I just did, right? But congratulations, good luck, obviously, we've still got some steps to go, but this is where you start, so thank you.
Next speaker will be Curtis Ellsworth from Skanska.
Not sure who put me after the Colonel. Good afternoon, everybody. What a significant day for Buchanan County. Being for mayor, I know how important this project is. I've been the project manager on this project for several years, through planning, design, and now you can see construction. But there's been a lot of people involved and a lot of effort been put forth, and so we want to recognize some of those people today that's really been working behind the scenes. And I'll start with the expanded Skanska team. We have with us Tim Burge, who will be our onsite inspector for the project. Jeff James, who's not with us today, who's been assisting in the project management responsibilities. And then we also have the team from Branch Builds, who's our design-build contractor on the project. We have Mr. Mike Howdischel here in the group on the stage. Mike is a senior project manager, has been great to work with on this project. We also have some other representatives of Branch Builds team scattered around, I can see some of them. Mr. Jason Hoyle, who's president of Branch Builds, is with us today. We have Barton Austin, project executive. Matthew Underwood, who I've known for many, many, many years. A graduate of Grundy Senior High School, I believe, Mr. Doug Childress. We have business development, John Gardner. Senior Superintendent Jimmy Kenyon with the fancy hat. Travis Cooper, I'm not sure if he's with us today or not. He's not. Joe King, who'll be superintendent for Branch Builds. And then we also have our architects from VMDO Architects out of Charlottesville, they are being represented by Joe Solontano. And they have a slew of consultants and people that have been working on this project. I talk to them almost daily, but I'm going to recognize some of them today. Andres Panceco, who's with us today. Brady Scott. Drew Fleming. I don't believe I've seen Kelly, but Kelly Callahan. Randy Livermore. As well as James Atkins, who cannot be here today. We also have a local firm, who's our civil engineer on the project, with Terratec, being represented by President Billy Campbell. Billy may be the one that's been involved in this project longer than me. And one other person in the back I see is Jessica Smelster with Envision, she's our furniture consultant. Excuse me, imagine a lot of planning goes around furniture. And quickly, and I'll be quiet, but there's a few other people I want to say special thanks to that have put in tons of hours on this project. That would be Jack Compton, he's a school board member. Angie McLennan, School Board Chair. We have Ben Street, Legal Counsel with Buchanan County Public Schools. And I think my new best friend is Sherri Fletcher, who we talk three or four times a day for the last, you know, year or so. So thank you all very much.
We have next Craig Stiltner, representing the Board of Supervisor.
I want to tell you a story, Mike. I know you want to talk about it. For those of you that don't know, Mike Rife is a diehard Jets fan, and he's sitting back here and he says, you know, Craig, the one thing you've missed, and he said, you missed a golden, we missed a golden opportunity to name that school right. We're thinking, he said, there's, what else is at Southern Gap? You know, I'm sitting here trying to think about what I'm going to say now, you know, I'm not worried about what else is here, you know? And he said, think about it, the Jets. And it goes to numps with the airport, right? So anyway, but you know, only Mike would be trying to figure out a way to get his New York Jets pushed into Buchanan County, right? We love you, Mike. But you know, I look around, I've been involved in Buchanan County for a long time, between coaching, politics, I see a lot of friends, and I'm a very emotional guy, I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I swear, I look around, I see this thing, and I mean, finally, I mean, man, I'm telling you, finally see it coming to pass. I mean, my daughter was in like the eighth grade when this thing first started happening. Craig Horn, the county administrator, and I, we talked about how our daughters was going to get to play basketball together at a new school, and you know, at Southern Gap, and it just never did happen, and then we start talking about it again, it kind of phases out, and then, you know, it starts getting a little snowball effect, and you know, finally we're, you know, we're ready to break ground. So I want to thank everybody. I mean, everybody that's had a hand in on this, I know there've been a lot of people mentioned, there's had to be somebody we've missed, I mean, between the Corps and the local and the state and the federal. So let's give these guys a hand one more time. Anybody, if you had a hand in on this, I mean, seriously, just give my hand to get this thing going through. One thing, one thing I ask is that, you know, I brought up the thing about coaching, look back and see Coach Cooper and see several other coaches, Coach Compton back here sitting beside of him, and you know, in coaching, you know, the one thing that really makes a good team is unity. And for a team to click, you got to come together. What makes a community come together, you know, is love. People can say what they want about Buchanan County, I've been around the world, I've been a lot of places, but I'm telling you, I always find my way right back here. I love Buchanan County, and I've said it for years, when it was Grundy High School, you cut me, I bleed blue and gold. If there's another team for Buchanan County playing that Grundy's not playing, you cut me, I bleed red and blue and white. I don't care, I bleed black and purple, as long as it's Buchanan County. But today, you cut me, I bleed black and gold. I'm diehard Southern Gap Eagles. I'm all about it, and I want you to bring that pride that you brought from Hurley, that you had at Hurley, that you had at Twin Valley, that we had at Grundy, bring it to Southern Gap, and let's go out and let's kick some butt, take names now, okay? Good thing. Love you, God.
It's a little difficult to follow after all of those. I just wanted to say some closing remarks to all of you today, that this day is not just about the groundbreaking, it's about building dreams, fostering opportunities, and laying the foundation for a brighter future for our kids. Southern Gap High School will not only be a place of academic excellence, but it will be a place for our kids to be creative, to be innovative, and to explore new passions and talents, and to grow as leaders of tomorrow. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of so many, many individuals that's made this day possible. Thank you for your commitment to our students. To the teachers and staff, thank you for your unwavering dedication to our students. It inspires us all. To the parents and community members, your support and involvement is invaluable, and we're deeply grateful for the trust that you place in us. So as we look forward to the future, this new school, Southern Gap High School, will be equipped with the state-of-the-art facilities, innovative technology, and flexible learning spaces that can meet all the diverse learning needs of all of our children. But our goal is to nurture not only the academics, but a sense of community. As Craig said, we have to be committed to ensuring that this school will reflect the diversity and that they get to communities together, and that so every child will have the opportunity to thrive. So as we break this ground today, let us also break barriers. Let us break the barriers of doubt, of fear, of the limitations that hold our students back. Let us build the bridge that will connect our students to their dreams, their future, and to each other. Together, we have that power. We have the power to create an environment where every student will succeed and our community will flourish. This groundbreaking ceremony marks the beginning of a new era in the education for our community, and I am thrilled to see what the future holds. So let us celebrate this milestone, not just for the building that's going to be built on this site, but for the countless lives that's going to be transformed within its walls. Together, we're building a legacy. We're building a legacy of hope and opportunity and success for generations to come. Thank you. So now, what we've all been waiting for. I'm going to ask all of our distinguished guests to pick up a shovel, and we'll secure it in the dirt. So, all of the shovels are down here. Want the hard hat too? I forget about the hard hat. I told them I didn't want my hard hat, because they guess that's mine. And I said, "I don't want to get in hats."
I'm going to get that, let you.
Okay, on the count of three, we'll call it a ber. One, two, three.
Yes.
I'm doing different, like nails, hair, and learning all of like big break things about it.
I like learning about how important cybersecurity is, like to everything, just like with my video game passwords, like just going to the store, how everything's just out there in a way. This is a very interesting class, and I love how in Popcorn Fridays.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy?
Well, I love doing it.
Doing impressions on some of my friends that take the same class.
Well, I love doing like anatomy and when we, well, I, I don't know. I just like doing anatomy and stuff like that, it was fun.
My favorite part about the class is the fun activities and learning about law enforcement. Can't forget my favorite teacher, Brian.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy class?
My favorite part is getting here and building basically anything you want along with the people that are in here. It's like a supportive environment.
What's your favorite part about your class?
Probably just working on all these classes and helping out a couple of my friends.
With drafting class, I like draw stuff and putting it out.
I love cooking, because then you get to eat food afterwards. So, that's pretty cool.
My favorite part is the skills and getting to go to the nursing home. I like the more hands-on, instead of just having to do bookwork all the time.
What about they had greenhouse? I was like, "Okay, I'll take that." I did it for the row of plants from my great-grandmother, who taught me how to take care of her garden and stuff.
I like it a lot because it's what I want to do. I learned a lot from her, she's an excellent teacher. I was learning the rays, if you're anybody watching, it didn't matter how old you were, but... I don't know, I just liked the way I looked at it, you know what I mean? Kind of one.
We are sixth grade from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are please go to Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 4D class, Council Elementary.
We are family!
We are 4A from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 7B from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 1st grade Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 2L from Council Elementary Middle School.
We are family! And we love our school mama!
And your same mama loves you.
We are family!
Good at school because the academic offers are pretty important to me.
Hurley High School because the staff members are amazing and the friendships last forever.
My favorite memory was when I got to spend my eighth grade year with Hannah.
Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion.
Tom?
Second.
Ray, second.
Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Can I have a motion to certify closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Coach is motion, Mike's second. Coach?
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Motion.
Tommy?
Second.
Motion? Coach is second. Any discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Second.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Can I get a motion to approve our bills and payables?
I'll make a motion to approve bills.
Motion by Ray?
Second.
Second, my coach. Any discussion? Ms. Testers?
She's upstairs.
She's upstairs.
Ms. Fletcher, do we have any? Yes, we have many paid bills.
Okay. Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
With the exception of Southern Gap.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Well, we do have two late change orders that need to be approved.
Okay, yeah.
We have a change order number three out of the early site package for $47,180. And we have a change order number three out of the building package for $875,516, which is a credit. I'll make a motion to approve both of these change orders, subject to legal review.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Angie. Any discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Any other motion from closed session? We'll go ahead and get those out of the way.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we request the board of supervisors for appropriation changes. One of them is Fund One, the School Operation Fund, which is federal funding. Appropriations of $3,741,760. And then the state grant School Construction Fund, additional appropriations of $10 million, which is total request of $13,741,760.92.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Angie's second. Any discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
I'm sure it's fine. I'm going to vote no, simply because I don't understand it.
Angie? Tom?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Yes. Ms. Fletcher will?
You can get with the admin after the meeting.
And maybe Ms. Tester will be down from the insurance meeting.
Because she's probably...
She's the one you probably need to talk to.
And we've got, we've got it there, I'll show you.
Any other from closed session?
Yeah, I've got a resolution supporting Ella Rastignik that I want to add this on to the agenda and ask for board approval.
Are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Second. No, any other discussion? And uh, Tanya, I think Mr. Blankship has a, the resolution for you to record in the minutes.
I'm a yes.
Coach, Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, I think that's all from our closed session. Uh, enrollment update?
Enrollment.
Got a copy.
We got a copy we can?
Give you.
We'll give you.
Got to, right here.
You can have my card.
That way we don't have to read it out all the way. You can have a copy.
Do you wanna give this one to Anita?
Yeah.
Attendance were down nine students this month. There were twenty-one ninety-seven. It's twenty-two oh six last uh month.
What was last month?
Twenty-two oh six.
Okay.
It's um flooding. We lost some students after the flooding and then we lost them to homeschool. So, we're down.
Okay. Uh, resignations. I have a motion to accept the resignations in your packet?
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second. Coach, any discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, we had a couple of phone votes we need to ratify. The first one is on McClure Wells. If I remember correctly, that is a company name change on the concrete that we have. Is it Southern Gap?
Yes. Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Ray, uh, you need to comment any, anything on that?
No, I've, I've looked at that and it's fine.
Okay. My, uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, and we have to ratify on our public hearing for our budget that we've already done.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Tommy? Uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. After ratifying the purchase of the lawnmower over at Hurley Elementary Middle School, can I have a motion?
Motion.
That's Tommy, and second?
Second.
Ray? Any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. We need approval for the Perkins Plan and that's the CTE.
Yes. That's uh Karen Taylor's CTE plan.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
David's second. Any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, we got a grant for Title One Micro for an amount of ten thousand dollars. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
Yeah, it's Title, part of Title One.
Part of Title One. Coach is the motion, Angie's the second.
Yes.
Coach, Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, our milk bid, I think we only have one. It's the same as Ben, is that correct?
Yes, we only have one.
Can I have a motion to approve our milk bid?
Motion to approve the milk.
Second.
Second. Coach is the motions, Mike is the second. Coach?
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, Head Start wants a memorandum of understanding where we're gonna feed them?
I'll approve that. I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by David, second by Angie. Uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, we got several policy updates in your packet. This is a uh motion to approve and accept them as a first reading and with specifics.
I count twenty-seven policies, is that right?
Yep, and we gotta designate two specifics under J E C B with option two because we don't accept part-time enrollment. And then J O D F option as we have a form for that.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve all those in the board packet, twenty-seven policies.
Second.
Do you want to have a student representative or we haven't in the past? Do you all want to do that or it's optional?
Student representative?
To the board.
To the board.
Oh.
There's a couple of divisions that do that.
Yeah, we've not done it here in, ever.
Yeah, so.
It's optional.
Have a motion by David. We have a second?
Second.
Tommy? Any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Tommy? Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, need to have a motion to approve our substitutes, volunteers and coaches list.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
David's motion?
Second.
Mike's the second. Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And also part of that, I need a motion to ratify, which was a phone ratification of Christian church and Scotty Wampler. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, second, Tommy. Uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, we already got additional appropriations. All right, uh, Twin Valley parking lot, uh, we got bids on striping and painting the parking lot.
I'll make a motion to Boston, uh, Bostick Ceiling quote.
I'll say.
They were the cheapest.
Yeah, as little bids, a motion for David, Angie a second. Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. I'm a motion set the last day of school as May thirtieth, teacher workdays June second, third and fourth.
Motion.
Motion, have a second? Second, David. Any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, set the school calendar for next year. We have two options. Can I have a motion for one?
My district prefers option one.
Option one.
I'll second that.
And second by Angie. Any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I have a motion for approval on the registration date for Head Start, pre-K and kindergarten.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Angie, second by David. Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, approvals for summer school dates, June ninth through the twenty-seventh, be three weeks this year. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? My, uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And our summer school pay rate, which was the same as last year?
Keep it same as last year.
Motion to approve summer school pay rate.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ray?
Second.
David's the second. Any discussion on that? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Two hundred dollars for uh teachers and a hundred dollars for classified.
Bus driver.
Yeah, the bus drivers cooks, uh, pair of professionals. Yeah.
Just make sure those rates are entered into the minutes.
Yes.
Uh, Worldwide Faith Ministries have, has asked to use the Riverview football, soccer, baseball field, whatever, whatever, uh, out there beside the school, July first through July twenty-second.
I make a motion.
Motion by Angie, second?
Second.
David? Uh, coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Tommy, I'm sorry. Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, Personnel Committee, we have any personnel recommendations for hire?
Talking about the, you know, Zach Weimer wants to cut the weeds at Twin Valley Elementary and that I had approval to check with their, cause their custodial staff and building engineers to see about at each school for the weed cutting for the summer.
See if the building engineer or custodians has someone that they would like to get, that they could talk to to hire instead of having to.
Right, because last year we tried to advertise and.
Every month we was trying to rehire again.
And so, we just went back to the schools and that did work better, so.
I'll make a motion to organize that.
Second. Second, uh, David? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things I wanna bring up.
Okay.
First, the baseball field at uh, field at Hurley, Sherry, have we, have you, you know what we're gonna do about that yet?
I hadn't, I had, um, Greg had asked me, you know, but they weren't using it. Greg Tester had said something and I said, let us get through the, the worst part here and then we will look to see.
Well, do we, do we have flood insurance on that over there?
I will have to ask Becky to see. I bet not. I don't think so. Because they don't even have, your high school don't have a baseball.
The flood debris got on the field or?
Well, it's, plus that, plus the fence is gone, the outfit, the fence.
Now, it may cover the fence, but I don't, you know.
But all the, you know, the, the debris and mud and sand's, it's on the field.
I know over Riverview, they've condemned the fields because the river got on the fields. So, they don't, you know, that sand, glass is buried in it. This is the new turf too. Uh, needles, they're gonna have to take up that turf field. They won't let them practice on it. They won't even let them touch it. It's gotta be disinfected. All the, uh, the sod on the baseball field's gotta be dug up.
So, really, if they use that field, it's gonna have to have a lot of work.
It's gonna be a lot of.
Can we look into that? You talk to someone, see if we can get anything done?
And Adam and I were over there because the playground, uh, you know, he's having to replace some of the fence on the playground.
Right.
And uh.
Hurley got a baseball team again this, this year?
No. No, not, not as I know of.
No.
But that's where they practice football.
They practice other things there.
And they play uh, little league and major or whatever, they practice football there.
But we talked about it and I'll check into it, but like Mr. Compton said, um, I bet it will be condemned and it'll take a lot of work.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty, it's in bad shape.
Yeah, it is. And another thing, uh, I'd like to make a motion that uh, the Hurley Elementary Middle School parking lot get paid. I know we done Twin Valley and Riverview and uh, I'd like to make a motion, I think it, you will have to ask the board supervisors for the money or I don't know if they give it to us yet or.
We'll check.
So, you're making them?
It's like two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars or something.
What about, we wait till after our budget comes? That'd be summertime.
Do what now?
When are you wanting to pay it?
Do what?
When are you wanting to pay it?
I'd like to have it done tomorrow, but you know it ain't gonna happen. I know that. I just wanna see if we can go ahead and get it done since other two schools got done.
I was gonna suggest that we just wait till after our budget gets approved and then it'd be summertime, school's out and we can look at it then. Because we don't even know if we got the money yet from the board supervisors for.
Well, they, well, they give it to Riverview and uh.
I thought that was already.
What's your motion? What's your motion?
So, there's no carryover for Hurley, huh?
Well, I mean, they used it all. We come back and got it.
Make your motion, I'll second it.
What's, what's your, what's your motion?
To ask the supervisors for the money?
Yes.
For funding?
Two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Uh, and I thought when this all went out in a bid, then we bid off three schools.
They did, but it was.
Until the money ran out.
Yeah, it was still, uh, that was the motion.
But ain't that funny? It runs out when we get, I need some.
Well, I'm gonna second your motion.
We just turned you all down for.
I have optimism that the, that the school, that the supervisors will fund it. I don't know. I've not talked to him, but.
I'm all for your motion, we.
We're paving everywhere.
Tommy's made a motion to pave the parking lot at Hurley Elementary?
Mill.
Hurley Elementary Middle School. Ray is second. Do we have any other discussion? Coach?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm saying that we should approve that we do the paving in July, not while we're trying to run buses in there. You know, we did it at Twin Valley and Riverview, but there's large enough lots in areas to put buses and vehicles elsewhere at Hurley Elementary. We don't have the space to. Normal traffic can't pave at the same time. We can do it in July. That's okay with Mr. Blankship if it's approved. Let's worry about.
We'll, we'll have to put a bid out too. He'll take a process, so hopefully.
Let's worry about the funding.
Yeah, we'll get it and it'll probably be summertime anyway, hopefully, and we can coordinate it maybe so that you don't have to deal with the bus traffic on that parking lot.
Well, you're gonna deal with buses any day up to whatever summer school is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can pave this area, could you not, Jeremy?
While that parking lot sits, it's gonna be hard to get the way to buses and council winters. We're limiting on west side of the end of the, underneath the fence to put the bus. So, the board makes the progress. It's a very tight parking lot with bus tolls anyway. So, it'd be very difficult if we got a big, a big city and the buses running off.
We have anything else?
Bad, wouldn't it? Because.
When y'all wanna meet? Next month?
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth will work for me.
Fifteenth?
Spring break. They won't be here.
Oh, who won't be here? Ray?
I'd be.
Ray's on spring break.
They're all.
I said you go on spring break.
I won't be.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth will work for me.
What'd you say, twenty-fourth?
I can't twenty-fourth.
Just don't do the twenty-third because that's track meet.
Before the twenty-fifth.
Uh, twenty-second.
Twenty-second will work.
Everybody good with twenty-second? Meeting next meeting?
I won't be here on the twenty-second. I have surgery that day.
Surgery's, that's not an excuse.
I do, I'm sorry.
Can you zoom?
Can you do the first? I can zoom.
How about the twenty-first? We don't wanna meet without you. Seventeen.
Can you do the twenty-first?
Twenty-first or seventeen?
Twenty-first.
I can't twenty-first or twenty-fourth. Seventeenth, good.
Twenty-third.
What day's that on?
That's the thirty day. Seventeen, that's good.
It's still spring break. Everything slaps out.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty, you can't do twenty-eighth, that's the.
I mean, the tenth, that'd be.
Twenty-fourth. What, nobody can go twenty-fourth?
Tenth?
I can do the tenth.
I can do it.
Yeah.
I can.
Cannot?
Can, can. April tenth.
Tenth's good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Good. Meeting adjourned.
Hey.